Good evening. I'll call to order the workshop for the Arvada City Council for November 25th, 2019. Mr. Devon, now first of all Kristen, roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Okay, we have one agenda item for tonight, which is an infrastructure update. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have Don Wick and members of his public works team, which I will allow him to introduce as part of the program. We're very pleased to offer this update to you on capital projects, street maintenance, and a number of other activities that are very important to the maintenance of our infrastructure that the Public Works Department is responsible for performing. Don?
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thanks for having us here tonight. I just learned from Dan, our streets manager, that the snow has quit, the roads are in good shape, so I think we can take the two hours that we had planned on.
Go ahead. You go on believing that, pal.
So, before we get started tonight, what I'd like to do is just take a moment to introduce the public works team who's here tonight. And some of these folks are going to be involved in the presentation to you all about the work that we're working on. So, I'd like to start to my right. Scott Lewis is the city's traffic engineer. Sitting next to him is Dan Pumphrey. Dan is our streets manager. Next to him is Keith Bowen. Keith is the pavement manager. Next to him is Jacob Beadle, our city engineer. And then back over here to the left, the far left, Sylvia Lopo is one of our traffic engineers. Derek Webb, who you met earlier tonight, he's a civil engineer and a project manager on 72nd Avenue. Train Tran is a civil engineer, and she is the project manager on Ralston Road project. And Phil Neal, who is our traffic operations manager. So, to get started, we are going to talk to you about three issues tonight. One is our traffic signal plan and what we're doing around traffic signal maintenance and replacement. Second is, we're going to be talking about updating you on our streets' infrastructure and how we have been doing with that in 2019 as well as a plan into 2020. And then we're going to give you an overview of the bond projects and explain to you how we intend to deliver those bond projects on time for the city. So with that, I'd like to introduce to you Scott Lewis, who will talk about our traffic signal plan.
Thanks, Don. Mr. Mayor, members of council, how are you tonight?
Excellent.
Great. First of all, thanks for allowing me to share our story a little bit tonight on what kind of assets we maintain in the city. One of them, of course, is traffic signals, and we'll be talking a little bit about that. But another big item that we have is all of our signs and all of our pavement markings. So, we could probably spend a whole evening on those as well. And one, recognize Phil, of course, who, we've got one crew that maintains all of our signs and all of our pavement markings in the entire city. So, it's an admirable job for them to keep up with that. So, having said that, I'm going to ask Sylvia to drive, and we're going to do a little asset dashboard for you. Get you to the next one. Coming up. Thanks. There it is. We came up with this little dashboard to kind of help us guide along where we're going to go in the future. We've got digital signs, we've got school flashers, and we have traffic signals. Digital signs includes all our repeating flashing beacons and all of our speed awareness signs that we have in the city. And school flashers, of course, is pretty self-explanatory. This dashboard has a map that we can kind of move around and see how we're doing within the city. One of the right-corner pie charts that we kind of see here is our age of our infrastructure. And as you can tell, we've got a pretty significant age of our system that's over 20 years old. That allows us to kind of focus on, obviously, where we're going to concentrate our efforts on replacing the signals. We want to get that red area, you know, as many, you know, get that into the green as much as we can. So, if Sylvia could just play around a little bit with the map, we can click on any one of those dots and kind of see when an intersection was built, what type of intersection it is, and, you know, kind of guide us through. So, it's going to be pretty cool and allow us to kind of keep track of our infrastructure. So, this is kind of a snapshot of where we are today. Another pie chart that we have up in the upper right is kind of where we stand as far as connectivity goes. I wrote this down because I kind of liked it. Signal connectivity makes it easier for us to see and address maintenance problems at intersections. If we're all, if I can see what a particular problem is at an intersection, I can notify our maintenance personnel right when it happens, and they're on their way. Connected signals are basically the first step towards unleashing the data in our traffic cabinets. Enable us, it enables us to make data-driven decisions that improve mobility, reduce congestion, and obviously save time for the traveling public. So, we're going to focus a lot on connectivity and getting that gray area to be as much purple as we can and take advantage of all the fiber that we've got going in the ground right now. So, that's basically the data-driven dashboard that we have.
Is that available to the public? Is it on?
Well, we're deciding. We're deciding.
Okay.
There are certain things I think that we want to make available to the public and certain things we don't. But for the most part, I don't know, I don't really see any reason to have, you know, to have them have access to it. Right. Go through a couple of our accomplishments that we had in 2019. If I can go forward. That would help. First of all, we had another successful year in our relationship with WL Contractors. We rely on them heavily, obviously. They're in town, and each year, we try to keep a great relationship with them. Basically, one of their main things that they do is when they get to an intersection, they'll open the cabinet, clean it, do diagnostic testing, and this is done quarterly. Obviously, this minimizes the amount of failures that we have and allows us to maintain those cabinets. Any emergency that happens, they have to respond within an hour. They have to have the repair done within 24 to 48 hours. And they've been really good about getting that done for us year after year. We had a real successful school flasher upgrade this year. We had over 100 that we had before we started, and now we're down to 77. With that, we also had a software upgrade that allows us to change the timing and change the flasher from our office. And that should be up and running here within the next month or so. We've identified, along with those intersections that you saw that are over 20 years old, obviously have old computer equipment that lies within the cabinet. So, we've made kind of a concerted effort to put new controllers in those. And I think we got maybe 10 done this year, and we've got, we'll probably get about 10 a year as we go along. Basically, the new cabinets will be connected vehicle-ready. They'll be, they've obviously got the latest state-of-the-art equipment that will allow us to take advantage of some of the new technologies that are coming. So, you know, we don't have to do a complete intersection replacement. We can have a controller running that does some of the same stuff. We took advantage this year of fiber being right next to our G-line, the signals that are at the crossings, and got those connected to fiber. Those, we've, the only work we have left is putting the switches in the cabinets. And we're pretty close to getting all those done and connected. Obviously, we do the repeating flashing beacon installs every year. Those are the flashing lights that the pedestrians push at our crosswalks, at our heavier locations, and we do a handful of those every year. We were, obviously, we've done a few signal designs that we have in the hopper, and we have one that's currently under construction. And that's the one out by 5800 Ralston Road Signal. All right. 2020 planning. I think it's really important for us to develop a master signal plan. This establishes specific objectives for managing the signal infrastructure that ensures the signals are operating at their most efficient levels. We need to identify what constitutes a good basic service plan to our citizens and what we need to do to provide that service. These objectives needs to touch on all aspects of our signal, from design, construction, timing, operations, and also maintenance. This allows us to kind of get out of the reactive mode of maintenance and into the more proactive side of it. Obviously, connectivity is the first step to having all this done. And we're going to concentrate heavily on connecting that wherever fiber's available. We have a Dr. Cog grant that is going to allow us to attach over 17 intersections to the backbone fiber that's currently in the ground.
Does that give us more real-time reaction rather than just being on timers for these things?
Yeah, it's live, connected data.
Okay, that's what we need.
It unlocks all that data that's in that controller that without being in communication, we don't know what it is. We have to go to the, go there and, you know, download it into a thumb drive. Part of developing a signal master plan, obviously, one of the key things that we're going to do is start structural testing, our poles, especially in those ones that are in the area, those 20-year-old ones, they're rusted, and we want to keep an eye out on them. Part of that programming is also a health index survey. Basically, that would break it down into each aspect of an intersection: structural, the overhead, the underground, and then everything that's at a cabinet. Coming up with a meaningful number for each intersection based on that health index will allow us to program our money, I think, a little bit more efficiently to identify which intersections are the most critical. And that is my presentation. That's an example of the type of structural testing report that we generate.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Just a quick question. So, if a signal, if I see a signal's out, and obviously every other car around me sees a signal is out, and I was a citizen who thought, who do I call? What's the best way for people to call and report an outage? You may already know about it, but they're going to feel better about it if they know that they've called and let somebody know.
Right, just call City Hall.
And so if it's like at 11 o'clock at night?
It'll get directed to the emergency number.
So, they would just call the?
I think police dispatch obviously has that number as well. So, it would be directed right to WL.
Okay. And then, just for my benefit, when a light's out like that, what's typical, what's the typical response time for something to get fixed?
Well, they have, depending on what it is, if it's a power outage, obviously, we rely on Excel, but we're going to be at the intersection with generators if we know that we have a, you know, a lengthy power delay. It's, we've got to have WL out there within an hour, and it's fixed within 24.
Okay. So, and if it's a power outage, then you've got?
There's other things.
Ways to get around that?
Yeah.
Okay. But so, since I don't know City Hall's number off the top of my head, for the viewers at home, what would that number be? And so I can also put it in my phone? So, I can call that number anytime, and it'll get directed to police dispatch or wherever it needs to go?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
So, I do have a few questions. I didn't see that in your presentation. But what about signals are points where we can collect the most data of what's going on in our city?
Correct.
And like have real-time health. But I didn't see anything talk about maybe our future focus around, you know, counting cars and speeds and, you know, detection so that we can take that data and make real-time adjustments to our system. Because I, and I'll just wrap up where I'm going, is, you know, we all talk about smooth roads, but if you're standing still on a smooth road, it doesn't do anyone any good. So, the idea is to get the traffic through our city or to their home or business. So, what kind of, I know it sounds like you're future-proofing the controller, but what is your thoughts around getting more data off of intersections?
Well, I kind of purposely did this just for infrastructure type of maintenance and things like that. It is all about connectivity. There is a lot of data that we can grab, but without it getting back to me or to, you know, people who need that data, it doesn't do us any good. So, I'm hoping to have a whole nother presentation where, once we start logging this data, how we use it.
Okay.
And that's, you know, traffic adaptive signals and travel demand. And, I mean, it's all really cool stuff, but we need to get our signals connected first step.
So, when you're doing that, you are future-proofing them?
Oh, yeah.
So, we can make them better?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Especially when connected vehicle technology comes in, that would be really cool.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Very good. I don't see any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll hand it over to Dan.
Good evening. I'd like to echo Scott's comments early. Thank you for this opportunity and letting us come out and provide this presentation in this adverse weather situation. No question.
That was the end of the last one, Don. Okay, guys, let's stay focused.
Okay, so Keith's going to start us off with a discussion about PCI ratings.
So, this slide is showing some of our typical PCI ratings, the pavement, for the pavement condition index. And our approach is going to be more of a different treatment types for the appropriate PCI rating. I know you've all been talked to about PCI over and over again. But our approach is to show you, like, the 63, it's more of a crack seal to fix those cracks and a surface treatment to fix that, to prolong the life of that asphalt rather than just to go in and replace that, wait till it gets worse. So, with these, we kind of talked through some of that. You know, the 95, it's really not that bad. Maybe in a few years later, we go in there and do those crack seal, and if it needed that surface treatment to do that. And it's really about the preservation of that asphalt before we get to the 19s, before we get to those low numbers where our only option is to take it out and replace it. So, that's really what we're trying to talk through in some of those, is really that preservation piece.
In this slide, we put several exhibits in here. The left, the contracted, is something that we cannot do in-house due to the magnitude of the work. The top-left corner is a chip seal project, and the bottom-right is more of a overlay process, melon overlay. The top-right is a streets team performing some concrete curbing gutter. That's something that we can do in addition to the work that we contract out, that we can keep moving forward and keeping that concrete work process being done. The work that they do is more geared towards crossbands and radiuses and that sort of thing. One thing we want to continue to do and do more of in 2020, the bottom-right is a patch. That is something that is one of the greater costs of our program, is the patching and the prep work for the contractor to come in. And we want to ramp that up so that we're doing that work internally so that we're able to have a contractor coming behind us and do what they do best. So, some accomplishments for 2019. We had the melon overlay project, Carr Street, 64th to 72nd, and the Indiana, or excuse me, 72nd from Ward Road to Indiana, and then 59th, Old Wadsworth to Allison. And we did chip seal up north on Asics Parkway, Indiana, to Alcar, 72nd Drive to Vinnie Court, that loop in there, and Yankway from 64th to the Frame. And we continued this year, as we intend to next year, to do the clustering for the concrete replacement. So, basically, this slide kind of talks to, you know, what are we getting for the asphalt and melon overlay? Well, it's a long-term, very costly repair. It does provide us with a new, smooth driving surface, and its life expectancy is the greatest at 15 to 20 years. Chip seal, it's a surface treatment that's also a long-term, it's very cost-effective. And I know it's not very popular amongst a lot of people, but it is, it creates a new wear course on the surface, and we're able to extend the life of that street out eight to 10 years. This year, Streets Division began doing crack seal in-house. We also started doing mastic. The difference between the two is crack seal is your narrower joints, your transversary longitudinals, whereas your mastic joints are the really wide ones. And that's, so basically, they look the same, they perform the same, but one's intended for one process and one's intended for the other. It's probably the most cost-effective preventive maintenance you could possibly do because it keeps water intrusion from getting into the subbase and therefore deteriorating the asphalt surface. Its life expectancy, three to five years. It's a, basically, it's a continual maintenance item that the slides you showed earlier, talking about where we get to a point where a street's new, and then it ages out between two and five years. You start to see some cracking, some oxidation. Crack seal is the key to come in right at the beginning when we're seeing that change in the pavement, and we're working to keep that water intrusion out. It's all about preservation. I know you've endured a lot of conversation about backlog and the expense of backlog, and backlog is, that is our one most expensive area of groups of streets, being that they are so far deteriorated that they basically require a complete reconstruct. So, our philosophy moving forward is to be looking at preservation, keeping what we have that's already good in good order.
So, with this slide, we're trying to collect more information than just our PCI. We know what that is, we have it, but it's just one of those many options we have at looking at our streets. So, we're coming up with a plan to put all of that information together in one document, and we're actually going out and doing visual inspections, the core samples of those streets. We're looking at age of streets, and with that clustering approach, we put all that together. And just because we go into this one area, it may not be an area that is all replace or dig up and replace or melon overlay. We can go into an area and still have some streets in there that are good that we can do maybe a chip seal to. Maybe there's an area, some streets that just need a crack seal. Instead of having that one-look approach to all of those streets in that area, we want to look at all those different options to save the money to go in there and do what's appropriate instead of just doing what we have to do, you know, doing it because we're doing that area. So, we went in and did all of that information. This area here, it just so happens, it's, the average PCI is a 36, and the average age since the last construction is 30 years in this section. This one, this is a total rehab in this section here. But like I said, some of these areas we go into, it's more about what is appropriate for each individual street instead of what's appropriate just for that one clustered area. Which one was it? This picture here, it basically nails a home of why preservation is important. This picture, back in 2004, Bridgeport in Fairfield, Connecticut, this is one of the streets like we have, Eldridge is one of them, 88th, where it's shared between two separate municipalities. They both went in in 2004, and they both did a melon overlay on that street. Fairfield, six years later, in 2010, they went in and did a crack seal and micro-surfacing. This picture taken in 2014, four years later, you can see the difference. Bridgeport's left with just, they've got to go in and just do another melon overlay. They have no option on that street. It's deteriorated to that point. But by doing that preservation piece, Fairfield, they're left with a very good street. And that's where we're trying to get to. We want to be where we're doing more of that preservation piece rather than just the replacement. You know, prolong what is in good shape. And I think this really, really shows that. So, keys for success, for future success, you know, strategic collaboration with all stakeholders. We want to be involved when they're, Scott's doing a replacement on an intersection. When they're digging up the road, instead of just having a contractor come in and patch that back, we want to go in and actually pave that intersection in conjunction with their project. The impact to the public is a lot less when we go to do the rest of that street. We're not impacting that intersection. We may be, you know, impacting further down the road, but that intersection's the real key for clogging up traffic. And we want to, we want to try to get in there whenever we have another project that's going on. Maybe it's a miscellaneous drainage project. We want to work in conjunction with our other projects and try to collaborate on those as best as possible. Our prioritization. Like I said, we want to, we want to work on the preservation of our streets, not just going with the one approach of replace. We want to take care of what we have. Don't let them get to that backlog. Stop that backlog from growing and take care of what we have. The implementation of the streets' master plan, you know, that's one of council's strategic goals by December 2020. We're working on that, and we want to have that implemented. Integration with the appropriate technology. We want to be on the forefront of what's out there for our streets. The last, the last major change in street infrastructure was 1956 with Eisenhower with his interstate system. We really haven't changed much since then. It's been replace our streets. That's all we've really done. We want to look at other options out there, our preservation. There's always new things out there. There's always new ways of looking at our streets, new technology that tells us the condition of our streets. And we want to, we want to be on the forefront of that. And then foster future learning. Like I said, we want to be out there with those new ideas. There's pilot programs we can be involved with. There's a lot of things out there that the education piece that we need to stay up on and be involved in.
So, for 2020, we're currently working on the street selection and determining the appropriate treatment types, identify street segments for concrete replacement. And after the street selection is determined, then we will be able to do the cost estimates on those proposed street segments. And we're looking at renewing the two contracts that we have currently with Triple M and APC for the concrete work and the asphalt work.
Okay, council, Mr. Jones?
Just a question and a comment. So, you've seen the movie Cars, Mater. So, when 72nd was done from Indiana to Ward, I kind of felt like Mater the first time I rode down that thing. It was awesome. Thank you for doing that. And then, so, obviously, you did the driveline or the drivelanes. What's the plan for the part that we don't drive on? Will that get corrected at some point in time?
That will. That was intended to correct all that rutting and rumbling through there. And we were trying to approach that in a more strategic measure so that we could correct those issues with the potholing and the bad ride and so forth, with the intent of coming back and then doing the rest of it in its entirety.
Yeah, no, and I honestly, that's, the most important part was what you did, in my opinion. But I know someone will ask me at some point in time, what's the plan for the other part? And so I appreciate that answer. But yeah, it was amazing. I actually love driving on that section of road now. So, it was fabulous. Thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
So, I think you kind of say it, but I just want to add more color to it. When you say you're working with stakeholders when you're looking at a project, I mean, it's, when you look at asset management, it's, I think a lot of groups are trying now is to look at a project limit and then go in and see what are all the things that should be fixed at that time. And when you talk about your stakeholders, you mentioned the intersection, like Scott, but what about, you know, the utilities team who's tearing but what about, you know, the utilities team who's tearing up the road to put in new sewer and water? Are we working with, with that team as well and trying to look at all the asset replacement in, in that project?
Yeah, we are. With, with utility lines, we tend to let them, we want to let them settle. If we went in right after and tried to pave over Lake Sims, that, that water line that went through there, we want to let that ground settle some more, the compaction be right. If we went through there and paved it, we have the chance that we could have a low spot in sink, so we try to wait a year or two before we go in there to do that, that type of work. But yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so there is some coordination or at least collaboration, I shouldn't say that at least.
Yeah, absolutely.
I went blank. Oh, PCI. So on your PCI readings, and you talked about leveraging technology, one of the things we had a robust conversation around, I think one time up here, was giving you the tools to be able to identify the PCI more frequently. I think right now we do it every year or every other year.
Every three years.
Every three years. That maybe we should equip some of the vehicles with some LiDAR detection and watch the PCI change because I think the discussion we had up here was, well, one street might be really bad, but not very many cars, you know, go on it, and maybe it deteriorates a lot slower rate than, than one that seems good, but it deteriorates real fast in that one year or two years because maybe traffic patterns or poor base or whatever the case is. Has there been any thoughts about leveraging some real-time kind of data feedbacks back to you to make real-time decisions versus waiting three years?
We're actually looking into that technology to outfit a vehicle with some of that technology. As you know, it's expensive, so we're looking at a system that's a kind of add-on as we grow. But yeah, we are definitely looking into that. We haven't nailed down one manufacturer or another yet, we're looking for some demos. But yeah, we are looking into that.
Okay, because I think that would be easier and better to, to identify where your projects. Now, the grant, granted, it might change your five-year plan or ten-year plan or two-year plan just because of that, but I think that would be real thoughtful enough to know where we need to repair our roads faster, sooner, different places.
Right.
All right, thank you.
We're, we're interested in when they get the technology, as you were speaking with Scott earlier about, to also be able to identify the traffic counts and the loads, and we can take all that into our toolbox with the PCI and the street classification and all those variables that make up that data-driven approach.
Yeah, vehicle classification would be very interesting if you can track a few of those because that would be interesting for some of our discussion around single trash haulers. But if you had some classification, you would at least get to know, hey, how many trucks actually cross into this area and what lane are they sitting in, and then you can analyze the road. I think that would be really beneficial to us and other topics we have.
Good. Ms. Ford.
I just wanted to bring up the curbing that was put in on Pomona Drive. I know that there were a lot of concerns and complaints about the curbing and the handicap ramping. Are you finding that to be problematic throughout the city?
Somewhat in the beginning. I, I believe that we, we had the task of educating people what we were trying to do and why, and what that looks like, and we're trying to, you know, work with one standard until we get, you know, our final declaration of how we're going to approach the ADA compliance. And so I think in general, maybe not always the answer that folks want to hear, but I think when we were able to explain the why, I think for the majority, it, it was well-received.
And then while you're here, I just wanted to make a very minor complaint about the entryway into the King Supers Shopping Center off of Wadsworth. There was a very large pothole there, I've hit it a few times. It's a very awkward ingress, I guess, because there isn't a separate lane really to get in there, and then with that pothole. So if someone could check that out, that'd be great. I'd like to miss.
I think that's a C-DOT issue, isn't it?
I'll take, I'll take that and I'll file it for you.
Is it a C-DOT issue? Oh.
Thank you, it's noted.
Thank you. I think the, one final comment on this, let's just, as much as humanly possible, eliminate doing cuts into our streets once we've repaved them. There is nothing that ticks off citizens and me more than, than we do a really nice job on a, on a resurface of a street, and then because we haven't gotten the word out right, and it, and it could be, you know, Comcast or whoever, not necessarily a Citigroup, but comes in and cuts in that, that just infuriates me. So let's keep that to a minimum. Or never would even be better.
Well, and I asked that question, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe if I recall a conversation, different people, but you actually posed that you're doing this street and you do tell all the utility companies to come out and, right?
We have collaboration meetings with our internal folks as well as external stakeholders and.
Do they ever show up?
Sometimes, but we, we still get the message out and, and we try to communicate the best as possible.
Because that's what, I just, for Mayor, I agree with you, that's the number one complaint, but I also found that we'll tell the utility to show up and they don't show up.
Well, and we've had that conversation with Excel in particular.
Yeah, yes, I, Mr. Mayor, rooms the council, we've had exactly what the mayor just described occur more than once. We have reached out and I, and I, I know as recently as a few months ago, our collaboration with Excel in terms of meetings was better, and, and hopefully we'll be able to avoid those, those situations in the future. But from time to time, we do have situations occur where a utility company, for whatever reason, or, or because of a situation where they've got a failure occurring that they didn't count on, does exactly what, what, what you've described, Mayor, and whatever we can do to avoid that is certainly what we're doing.
Right.
But do we also put a fee associated by how old the pavement is? I thought there was some fee index, so of course, if we pave it and then two years later they come and cut it, I thought we added a fee, a higher fee for that.
We do have a cut fee, I believe, right?
And maybe it's not high enough.
I don't think it's indexed to ages.
Right? I mean, if you make it higher, they'll remember next time. Okay, well, more, more information.
We'll, we'll provide you with more, we don't believe it's indexed to the age of the, of the street or the, or the age of the repair. Maybe that's something we should look at.
Very good.
In relation to this, one thing I would mention is, is that we're very interested in a program that Denver is currently looking at implementing called One Build. And what they do is they essentially take all of the utility companies, the infrastructure, wet and dry, any work that needs to be done, they bring everybody together, matrix this out, make the coordination, prioritize what work gets done in what order, and, you know, the last thing that gets done is paving that street to avoid exactly the issue you're talking about, Mayor, I'm on board with you with that. It's what, what we all as the Public Works Team are trying to accomplish is to prevent that from happening in the future, and we'll probably adopt something very similar to the One Build strategy.
Right. Mr. Fiverr.
Yeah, you know, that, Don, if you want to stay up there, that brings up another thing that popped in my head regarding the new sub-utility engineering requirements when you get a permit to, to trench in our roads. Are we documenting the whole depth of, and who's in our right-of-way so that in the future, you know, we can maybe hold them a little bit more accountable and?
Yeah.
Granted, I get the permit, but now with the new laws, I was wondering if we're getting, like, more information for the street teams to know more about what's going on and?
That, that's exactly what we're striving to accomplish.
Right, yeah. Ms. Ford.
Is there any reason, reason that we can't request that they do curb to curb if they have to come in and mess the streets after they have been paved?
We, we have looked, you know, we, we've looked at different situations depending on the size of the cut and so forth, and, and what is the best measure? Do we want to do a full mill across a new street, or do we want to infrared that, that trench, you know, where basically it, it kind of integrates it into the, the new, into the old, old-new? And so we've been, so far, we've taken that on a case-by-case basis because sometimes milling all the way across, again, then we're creating two new seams, and so we try to evaluate what's the best measure so that, you know, we don't have that water intrusion.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones.
I just want to give a quick shout-out because, you know, while the Seventy Second Indiana project took a lot longer than we all hoped for, it was because of these kinds of issues that we delayed the opening of that so that the neighborhood could get their, whatever they needed to do in to that area. And so again, I think, I applaud you for delaying the opening of that intersection so that we could get all of that taken care of. I think that's exactly what we're talking about, and kudos to the, to the group for doing that.
Very good. I see no other questions, we can move on to the next section.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I start my presentation, I just wanted to add a little bit to that discussion on utilities. We do have a monthly coordination meeting, it's actually the first Wednesday of every month with, with Excel and Comcast and X, and CenturyLink, and with that, we discuss the projects that we have going on in the city and how they need to be a part of it, and then they also talk to us about what they're doing inside of our, what, what they're doing inside of our right-of-way.
Right. Good.
So thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to get in front of you and, and share some things that I'm very passionate about. And tonight I'm going to talk about alternative delivery, and then I'm going to do a deep dive on, well, not a deep dive, but an overview of the Bond projects, Ralston Road Phase Two and Seventy Second Avenue, Sims to Kipling. And I want to point out that I have my PMs in the audience here. Derek Webb is the PM for Seventy Second, and Trang Tran is the PM for Ralston Road.
That would mean project manager, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Pardon me.
That's okay.
And so, so any, any questions I might have them help me with.
Right.
So to get into it, alternative delivery, a one-on-one crash course, well, this is really a point one-on-one. It's a, it's a very high-level approach to alternative delivery. I mean, people spend their, their, their full careers on alternative delivery, and, and I'm going to spend ten minutes on it. So right now, there's three types that I want to talk about. Design, bid, build. This is your traditional alternative delivery method. This is what Ralston Road Phase Two is. So as you can see, the owner is in the middle, and so the city in this case is the owner, and first we, we have a design phase and we coordinate directly with the designer, get to a hundred percent level, bid it out, and then we'd start, then the city, the owner, has to coordinate and deal with the contractor through construction. The next type that I'd like to talk about is a design-build. And now this here is where we bring in a JV team typically, a contractor teamed with a design engineer, and so there is one point of contact that the city has to, to coordinate with, and there's one project manager that is in charge of the whole project or design manager, or whatever you'd like to call them. So the, the powerful thing here is, is, is risk management, and with the design-build alternative delivery method, the city has the opportunity to share that risk of the project schedule, overruns, things like that with the contractor, because at the very beginning of the project, the contractor has to bid this project. And, which brings me to a very important point, is that before that bidding process starts, the owner would prepare a procurement package, which is typically a twenty to thirty percent design and a whole packet of specifications and requirements, and then what the, the design-build team does is takes, takes those requirements and bids the project, and, and then, you know, the, the owner selects the lowest bid typically. So the third time, the third, I guess, type of alternative delivery is the one I really want to focus on, and this is the one that we use for Seventy Second, Seventy Second Avenue, and this is CMGC, Construction, Construction Manager, General Contractor. And with this, it's, it's a formal alternative delivery, but what's really unique here is that you bring the contractor in early. So in this case, we have Mueller Design Engineers as our designers, and we contracted with them about a year ago, and just actually last week, we awarded SEMA Construction as the contractor, the CMGC contractor. So what, what this does is it brings the contractor in to the design period early, so they have a seat at the table, they can participate in all of the coordination, all of the construction drawing reviews and do value engineering, and identify all of these construction issues before they get out there and start digging. And with this method, you can plan early construction packages, so while the, the designers are still working on the designer, design, the contractor can get out in the field and do the things that are ready, like utility relocation, clearing and grubbing, stormwater management, some early action things here, and especially with the Seventy Second Project, this is crucial because we're dealing with the railroad. So it brings the, the contractor to the table to coordinate with the railroad early on. And, and so with the Bond projects, we also have a, a schedule component. Alternative delivery speeds that process up because it ultimately gets the contractor out in the field, moving dirt and building sooner than your traditional methods. So I want to talk about, a little bit about risk here, and what this slide does is it kind of shows a comparison of the owner's risk compared to the contractor's risk. So as you can see, that first column there is the design-bid-build. The owner has quite a bit of risk in there, almost as much as the contractor, and then the design-build, it, it's quite a bit less for the, for the owner. And then CMGC, it's pretty much split, you know, fifty-fifty, and overall, it's quite a bit less for the project. And so, you know, that's a, that's a key component for the city is that we're, we're pushing that risk, we're sharing it with our contractor. So really, that's just an important thing. If you take anything away from alternative delivery, take this risk component, because this is really why it, it is stuck to the wall in our industry, is that we get to share the risk between the contractor and the owner. Why CMGC? Compressed schedule. We have to get, we have to get eighty-five percent of this budget spent by February of twenty twenty-two, so that's a tall order. And for the Seventy Second Project, it's roughly sixty-five million dollars, and, you know, so the sooner we can get these guys out in the field, spending money and moving dirt and making progress, the better. Shares the risk with the contractor. It costs up, costs a little bit more upfront just because of the procurement packages and contracting and risk register meetings and things like that, but overall, it's going to save money because we get those innovative ideas from the contractor, we get to identify risks, we get to identify issues early on, so we can react to them quickly and not be surprised. And lastly, I can't stress enough, is innovation. It brings the contractors to the table quick and early, and, you know, when you're building a bridge with the UP, all of the, the smart ideas are, are, are a great benefit, and the earlier we can get them, the better. So now to kind of move into the project phase, this, this first, I'm first going to talk about the Ralston Road Phase Two project, and this here is not alternative delivery, this is a design-bid-build project. So here's a little overview of the project. You know, it's going to be a complete reconstruction, widening the lanes to, to meet our codes, it's going to improve utilities and drainage improvements in the project, it's going to add five signals at five intersections, and then it's just going to help with the overall flow of traffic with some turn lanes and, and whatnot through the project. So here's the project team. Trang is the city's PM. FHU is the roadway prime, which is our, our designer. For Geotech is Shannon Wilson. For right-of-way, it is HCPEC. And on right-of-way, we have forty-seven impacts, not no full tanks, but forty-seven impacts. And right now, the team is going full, full speed ahead, getting those things done. And then Goodby and Associates is taking care of the utility coordination and Sue. Aztec is helping us with survey and right-of-way drawings, things like that. And then, of course, it's a design-bid-build project. So where are we at now? We are, essentially, we're at a thirty percent design. So there's, we, we've already started, I kind of put that picture up there, that icon of layers, so we build upon things. So we build upon the design, build upon knowledge and information that we have gathered. The first step was to go get a survey, get The first step was to go get a survey, get the topo, base the design off of that, then go get your geotechnical information, which is soils, groundwater levels, all of that type of stuff. And then with that, FHU put together a 30% design, which we got last summer. And we reviewed that, and now they're pushing forward to a 90% design. And then, as I stated before, 47 right-of-way project impacts. Now, where do we go from there? Here is a quick schedule of the project, kind of showing that we got the 30% design in May. Right now, our big push is the NOIs, which is Notice of Intent, which is something for the beginning of the right-of-way process. Our goal with that is to get that to all of the impacted properties before the holidays. And up there, we put December of 19, or December this year. So now, the next few weeks. Excuse me. So then in the spring, we're going to have a 100% design. And hopefully, from that, well, once we get the 100% design, we'll go out to bed and have a contractor onboard, and construction will begin about a year from now. And then, of course, the major deadline that everyone has their eyes on is the September 26th of 2022, is to spend that 85%. This here is a cool little rendering that Trang and Lance upstairs worked, the landscape architect team, worked together. And this was from a presentation that the team gave to Aura a few weeks ago. And this is just that they are interested in partnering with us to add some landscape, streetscape amenities that we're still working through. Nothing's 100% on that, but it's optimistic. But I just threw this up there because it's a good visualization of what the project's going to look like once it's done. I think it's pretty cool, too. So moving on to the 72nd and the underpass project. This rendering here that I want to point out, I couldn't find a good place to throw this picture, so I threw it on my cover slide. And this is a rendering that HDR, our public outreach consultant, helped us with. And this kind of shows what the project's going to look like when it's done, which I think is super cool. Shows the UP bridge there and shows 72nd going under it. So overview of the project. From Sims to Kipling, and two signals that are going to be included. It's overall going to improve two lanes in each direction and a dedicated bike lane. So it's going to really help with pedestrian traffic, and there's several schools in the area, so it's going to help the kids walk into school, walking home. And also, it's going to help that multimodal aspect of getting some, getting a place for the bikes. And then ultimately, of course, it is going to prevent that, or correct the backup with, when the train traffics come, and put the road underneath the UP, which is the major aspect of the project. And then the bottom section here is just an overall cross-section or typical section of what the street will look like eventually. And this is taken straight out of our 30% design plans here. So our project team. As I said before, Derek Webb is the project manager. Mueller Engineering is the roadway designer and overall prime. And HDR is the consultant that's doing the bridge design, environmental impacts and analysis, public outreach. Shannon Wilson's doing the geotechnical evaluation. And I want to point out with the Geotech is it's a known area that there's high groundwater. And that's a big concern, because we're building a lot of retaining walls in a massive bridge. And so saturated soils and groundwater makes things more complicated and ultimately more expensive. So what we've done here to mitigate that is we got ahead of it. We have beefed up our analysis to really understand what's going on with that. So when we get SEMA onboard, which we have as of now, they can look at that data and really come alongside Mueller and HDR and come up with some great ideas to build these bridge abutments and retaining walls and whatnot. Then going down the list, HCPEC is doing the right-of-way for us. Approximately 80 parcels are impacted, two full takes, which I think you guys just had a meeting on before this with Derek. And then Goodby and Associates, which is helping us with the utility coordination in Sioux. And then HKS did the topographic survey and right-of-way drawings. And a couple of things that make this project a little unique is just because of the size of it and the complexity, we made the decision to bring on an owner's rep, which we selected, but I think it comes, it's going to come to you here in the next couple council meetings, which Altech was the selected firm. And so they'll help us review drawings, utility coordination, stakeholder coordination, overall run the project very smoothly, and again, just get ahead of any unforeseen issues or just to make, just to help us make sure that everything runs smoothly. And then, of course, the CMGC contractor, SEMA, and they actually went in front of you last, a week from today, or a week ago today. So they are under contract and onboard, which is awesome. Then, of course, the delivery type is alternative delivery and CMGC. So again, where are we now? We are at a 30% design, which means that we have done all the upfront documents, so all the survey, all the Geotech is pretty much completed. A little bit of the Geotech is still working on, just because we wanted to beef that up, so to look at the groundwater. Mueller has completed a 30% design, and we are pushing hard on all of the right-of-way impacts. And again, it's the same schedule as I shared with Ralston Road, so we want those NOIs out before the holidays. And then, again, we awarded the CMGC contractor, and we awarded the, or about to award the owner's rep consultant. So here's a little schedule of where we're going and how we're going to get everything done on time and schedule. Last July was when we got our 30% design. We reviewed that, and we kind of slowed down as far as design goes, because we made the decision to go CMGC, and we didn't want to get so far ahead with the design before the contractor had a chance to look at the plans, look at the design, come in with those good ideas and value engineering and innovations and things like that to help the overall project. So that's where we're at now, and that's happening as we speak. SEMA is reviewing the design, and probably here in the next few weeks, we're going to get together and maybe make some changes to the design. And so, you know, the next phase is to get to 100% design and get those early action items identified that we can get out there and start moving dirt and start doing some construction work, which I've seen a lot of dates, you know, thrown against the wall, but nothing's really stuck yet. You know, that'll be something that will, I'll probably in the coming few weeks or months or so, I'll probably be back up in front of you, sharing those dates once they're identified. But it's optimistic, and the guys, the teams are working hard and working well together. And again, the major deadline here is that February of 2022, to get that 85% of the bond money spent. So this here, you got to watch out for this guy, is Captain Underpants flying around. And this here is a rendering of, from the ground level, that HDR put together of what it'll look like. I was going to say, I'm going to defer all my questions to this guy, but I don't know what type of answers you're getting. And again, that's, in conclusion, I guess, do you have any questions that I can...
Great, Mr. Jones?
So we're 15 months from tomorrow to February 26, 2022. What is, what happens? I know that there's percentage complete and all that, but do we run up hard against any bond deadlines or requirements to have the money used or substantially used by then?
So to answer that, there's two requirements, and Brian, you jump in if I start saying this wrong, is that there's two requirements, and one we've already met, is that I think we had to have, I forget the percentage, 5% to 10% spent within the first year, six months to a year, and we met that. And then the next major deadline is that 85%.
Is that at the 20, is that February 26?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and I'm fuzzy on the timeline of that first obstacle. I think it's six months to a year.
No, it was six months, so you had that correct. And the 85% rule basically means if we don't have 85% spent by three years, then we're subject to an arbitrage calculation. And I think we've talked about that before, but just to go over it quickly, it basically means we have to compare what we are paying on the bonds from an interest rate perspective to what we are earning on the bonds. And if we earn more than what we're paying, then we have to pay that money back, technically to the IRS. If we're not, then we're okay. And then there's another deadline at five years, and then again at 10, and on from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So where are we in terms of working with the railroad?
So where we're at, we're about to start coordination with them. We reached out to them about a year ago when this project started. But unfortunately, what's happened with the railroad since then is that there is a lot of changes internally, and they got rid of a lot of their staff. But the positive thing here is the guy that we coordinate with, he is now a consultant to the UP, so he's still in the loop, and that knowledge and coordination hasn't been lost. So the reason why we have slowed down our coordination and hasn't done, have not done anything formally with them is we wanted to wait for SEMA to get onboard to help us with that, and we didn't want to lock the design down with anything.
Just based upon our experience with the Gold Line and the Federal Railway Administration and that whole industry, we better stay on top of that, because if we don't, we're going to end up with some big delays, and we don't want to see that happen.
I'm hearing you loud and clear, and I agree, and that's one of the reasons why we have the owner's rep onboard.
Great.
To help us with that.
Good. Okay, Mr. Fiver?
By any chance, did we check into any grants from the railroad for the grade separation?
We've looked into that a little bit, but, and it's actually on our list to pursue more. But with this, it's, the railroad does not like underpasses, because they own the structure, their asset is on the structure. They prefer the overpass, where the city or the, we would own that bridge and we would have to maintain it. And so because of that, you know, it's not that optimistic, but we'll definitely vet it through and understand the ins and outs of it. And our owner's rep will help us with that.
Okay. Okay, I don't see any other questions. Mr. Devon, next steps? What do you need? I assume you don't need anything from us tonight?
No, this was primarily an informational update. However, as Jacob said, we will be coming back periodically to the city council to update you on what's going on with these very important bond projects. Tonight was a very strong overview on our entire operation in terms of infrastructure, but on the bond projects, we'll be coming back to you and updating you on how we're doing.
Very good. Want to thank all the presenters for providing the information tonight. Appreciate the information, the input, and the ability. Mr. Fiver, you had something else?
Well, I was just curious why they all wore suits, and I was wondering...
Didn't they know that this is a workshop tonight? It's a little...
Well, I was wondering if Don had something to do with it. Yes. Thank you. No, I don't, I'm not used to seeing Scott wear a tie, so it throws me a little bit.
Very good. Thank you all for being here. We are adjourned.